Call a meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Ms. Arcomando. Ms. Boralley. Mr. Ochello.
Present.
Ms. Ainello.
Present.
Mr. Florentino.
Present.
Ms. Roloff.
Here.
Ms. Turbick.
Present.
Mr. Verson.
Here.
Ms. Autorelli.
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At a quick notice of this meeting has been sent to all members of the Board of Education and to the bargain record in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, 1975. Student reports?
We are going to do the student reports and then I will do my report and then that will lead to our presentations where I'll ask our board members to transition to the seats.
All you guys.
Okay, I got it. For high school updates, we kicked off the year strong with grade level class meetings to review expectations and get everyone on the same page. Picture day rolled through quickly, lots of students hoping for their one and done shot. Back to school night brought great energy as families connected with teachers and got a glimpse into the year ahead. As a senior, I have to say, senior sunrise was unforgettable. Watching the sunrise with our class was a perfect way to start our final year together. Our ninth graders recently watched 102 Minutes That Changed America as part of our 9/11 education. It was a powerful experience that brought history to life. Councilors have been visiting senior English classes to support students through the college process and started Lunch and Learns, a super helpful way to get Common App help, especially for students feeling the pressure. And finally, homecoming tickets are on sale for this Thursday night. Students are already buzzing with excitement for the dance and all the spirit events leading up to it. Thank you.
Now, I will give a rundown about what is going on at our preschool and elementary schools. At Washington School, all of the classrooms are filled and they have a full PTO board eager to plan fun events and fundraisers for the community. Washington School has also welcomed a new teacher, Mrs. Roselli. At Long School, the beginning of the year is going great. They will hold their first assembly of the school year on Friday to celebrate their summer reading project. Also, Long Memorial is looking forward to holding their back to school night on September 24th. September as a whole is off to a smooth start at Franklin School. They thank their amazing staff, PTO, and the Board of Education for supporting them. Franklin School is celebrating Hispanic Heritage Month as well as literacy during their upcoming assembly. Finally, Smith School is busy welcoming the new kindergarten class and their families, as well as getting all students acclimated to their new classrooms. Smith School has also implemented their Smith motto. S for Start with Kindness, M Make Good Choices, I Include Others, T Take Chances, and H Have a Positive Attitude. Overall, the beginning of the 2025 to 2026 academic year is off to a strong start amongst all of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Okay, you're going to do your report.
Thank you, me and Zuzi. All right, I don't have too many things. I wanted to remind everybody that our homecoming is tomorrow night at the high school. Also, Friday night, we have our second home game at 7:00 PM. Friday Night Lates versus Butler, and the theme is neon, to wear neon. Wanted to remind everybody that we're closed Tuesday, September 23rd and October 2nd. And our SBEA Walkathon is Friday, September 26th. The SBEA is the Saddle Brook Education Association, and they are a group of people that really care about our schools. They collect and they raise money and they ask our school administration and our staff what is needed and they give to each of our buildings. So they're a wonderful organization and we love that they run this event and we ask everyone to participate. In October, there will be a bunch of dress downs. We have Week of Respect, so the principals will be sending out the themes for the dress downs for that week and Unity Day and Red Ribbon Week. So there will be a bunch of dress downs and theme days for the month of October. As always, after our Board of Ed meetings, typically usually by Friday, I will be sending something out to the community, updating them on everything that has happened over the last few weeks. And now, at this time, I wanted to make sure our board members, everyone got their card, right? Make sure you take that. Okay. And then, at this time, I'm going to ask Mrs. DeBonus to come on up. I'm going to have our board members, please go to the chairs. Thank you.
So we are very excited to honor Sabrina Bunay, who is here tonight. Before she comes up, I just want to share a little bit about what she is being recognized for. So we received an email that, in our world, went viral from the councilors to my office to Ms. Jenkins, to Ms. Violetti, Mr. Misch, and we were all abuzz. We got an email from College Board letting us know that Sabrina was selected for the College Board Big Future Ambassador for Saddle Brook Schools, which means that she applied and received that award. So let me tell you a little bit about it because we were like, this sounds amazing, but what is it? And now we've all learned. So what Sabrina is now charged with is this amazing leadership role where she is going to be sharing events and updates and everything that College Board has to offer with her peers using social media, word of mouth, anything that she can do, any forum that she can grab the audience of her peers. So she's in charge of sharing resources, leading initiatives, receiving support from councilors, and she's already made a meeting and met with Ms. Jenkins, which is amazing, and personalized outreach. So we are just so incredibly proud of her for the initiative. We didn't even know this existed. She applied and she got it and we are so incredibly proud of you and the leadership that you have in yourself. So please come accept this award from the Board of Education. You sure? Okay. So a little snappu with, you can't convert a Google slideshow into PowerPoint. It gets all wonky. So Access for Els, our annual presentation. I am actually really excited about presenting this to you because you will absolutely see the growth and the real hard work that our ESL teachers have been doing with our students. So Access for Els is the assessment that all students that are, that qualify for English Language Services receive. The state, a few years back, changed it from being an ELL, an English Language Learner, to now they're, the term is multilingual learner. So if you hear me saying ML throughout the presentation, that's what that refers to. So they take this test every spring. That is the only way that they can exit the ESL program. In order to exit, they have to get a 4.5. This is what a score report looks like. And basically what it does is it breaks down the four areas that students are tested in, which is reading, writing, speaking, and listening. It breaks it down. It tells what a child on the bottom is capable of doing. And then we've gone a step further in our district and we have what we call fingertip files, which we'll talk about a little later, but really gives the teachers, the classroom teachers, an idea of what are realistic expectations for that student at that language level, which has really helped. So, this year, last year, last school year, '24, '25, we had 70 students test. The year before, we had 76, so our numbers went down a little bit. Our participation rate for spring of 2025 was 100%, so 70 out of 70 students. And this is my fourth year here and every year we've had 100% participation, which is amazing. Okay, so by law, we are unable to present anything under 10 students. So you'll see, because of our population, while we have 70 students, they're scattered throughout the grade levels. So most of these are below 10. So if you look on the bottom, you'll see all grades. Slow down. Okay, all grades. And you can see again where our students are. And what we want to see is that our students are in that 5, 6 range, and I know the numbers are super tiny, but the bar graph in the next slide will show you what I'm so proud of. So you see that this is 23, 24, and 25. These first three bars are K through 5, then we move into the 6, 8 in the middle and the 9, 12. And what we want to see are those top bars growing every year, and that's absolutely what we're seeing. If you notice, in 2022, 2023, especially at our high school level, which by the way, when students come to us as language learners in the K5, they pick it up like this. They're in and out of the program. They're like little sponges. When a child comes to us in 9th, 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, it is really hard for them, especially our students that are coming to us and their alphabet is completely different. So our Spanish speakers have a little easier time than our Arabic speakers because now they're learning to read a different way. They're learning a brand new alphabet, so it is very difficult. So we are so excited to see these higher bars, that high green on the top. We're seeing those levels increase every year. And that means that we are doing what we need to be doing in our multilingual classrooms and in our gen ed classrooms for these students. So you'll see that we have to report achievement level, all grades. This one is showing you our Hispanic level versus Caucasian students. The reason it does this is because our Hispanic population is the highest in our demographic for ESL. That is our largest language. However, we still are underneath that 20 mark. At 20, we would have to offer bilingual services. We're not there yet. This graph is showing female versus male. You can keep going, Tony. Okay, this is the good stuff. So family engagement is what it's all about. Getting our multilingual learner families involved in the community. And every year, we've done something that has been, the showing of parents and family members and community members that come to these events has been amazing. So last year, we did a cultural event in the gym during one of our parent partnership nights, and our students are so proud of their heritage and they're so proud of learning to be in our community as well and embrace that. And they did such an amazing job on these projects and telling everybody about why they're proud to be who they are and why they're proud to be in Saddle Brook. And it was really just an amazing, amazing night. So what are we doing to make sure our multilingual learners have everything they need? So the fingertip profiles that I was talking about before, it basically takes the scores and it tells teachers, these are realistic expectations in a classroom. So a student who is probably a 3.2 is not going to be able to give you a five paragraph essay at this point, but they probably could give you a really solid introduction paragraph. So maybe that's what we focus on, right? Let's meet them where they are and then continue to increase what they can do. So those fingertip files have been fantastic. We actually just got them, so now my next role, we'll be meeting with all the teachers to talk about what these reports say. And data analysis, we're always looking at Linkit benchmarks. We'll talk about that stuff later, but all of our data points and how our students that are considered MLs are doing in those areas. TSOL training. So our ESL teachers are a part of TSOL, which is an organization that really specializes in the teaching and education of not only ESL teachers, but gen ed teachers that constantly support our multilingual learners. So we have sent our teachers to a lot of professional development. We've also done things virtually with them and it's just an amazing organization. Programming. One of the things we did last year, because we're, we really believe that the more that we can get families involved, the better the children will be and the more acclimated they will be in the school district quicker. So we started this program called Halos in all the buildings. And basically, it means helping everyone learn to love our school. And what we do is when we have a new registrant that we know does not speak English, we have a system set up where we take them in, first day, we meet them at the door with kids their own age that probably speak their language, that help them navigate the building. They're their buddy for the day. They're their buddy at lunchtime. At the elementary grades, they're their buddy during recess. Here, they, we let them leave their classes a couple of minutes early and they help walk them to their classes. And they stay with them for about the whole full week until they're ready to go on their own. And what we've done with that is we've given them a network. They're coming in, they don't know the language, they have no peers, and this has really helped them feel like they're a part of the community so much quicker. So we're very proud of that. These students work with our multilingual students, help them acclimate to our schools. We've also implemented a new leveled approach to our ESL program at the high school because, again, those students struggle so much more than the lower grades. So now at the high school, we have a beginner, an intermediate, and an advanced level class. This way, we can really support what they need and help them move faster to proficiency. And then, lastly, student support and family engagement, which I talked about. We are trying everything we can to make sure these new families to Saddle Brook and our ML families now feel like they're a part of the community. It's hard when you don't know the language to get involved in PTO, to get involved in events, and we're really trying to get them the information and make them feel very comfortable when coming to the buildings. That's it. That's it for that.
Any questions?
Any questions about that? Yes. Okay, so I started creating it, but now, the Linkit team that we work with, I send them our access scores and now they do it for me and spit out the information. I'll be honest, their reports are much better than my hand ones. So that's what they do. They take those scores and then they give us those reports. And it's individualized. Every child has their own report and it's broken down by what the expectation should be in the classroom for everything related to language, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. So even in a math classroom, even though it's not tailored to math skill, it's letting the teacher know where their writing skills are. They may not be able to write the numbers yet in a 10th grade classroom because they're, they don't write American numbers, English numbers. It may be that, you know, they're still in that, we call it, there's a period of time where students get really silent and they won't speak at all when they first start school, right? That's because they're not comfortable. If you threw me in another country, silent, which I know sounds bizarre because I'm never silent, but that's what would happen, right? So those fingertip files have been nothing but helpful to our teachers. Yep. So our principals and the councilors have worked together to identify students that want to be a part of this. Last year, I sat in on the first couple of times that they met to really have the students understand what the expectations were, what their role was. And to be honest, those, most of the kids that wanted to do this were kids that were in that boat once. They were those kids, so they completely understood it. And it really has been fantastic. We do our assessments that day. We meet with the family that day and it's, it's really been great. It's been a great transition piece for these kids. Yes. To the fingertip files? Yes. Mm-hmm. We upload them into Genesis. So everything that would be an assessment piece is tied to that student. Yeah. So TSOL membership, we pay for, for our ESL teachers. We use Title III for that. But then, they get a certain amount of workshops with that purchase of the membership. And then there's obviously other workshops that they can get, but it's, it's been phenomenal for them. It's really been great because to find, for our ESL teachers, to find workshops that are actually worthwhile for them to attend, it's not easy. So this is for them by ESL teachers and it's been great. Even for myself, it's been great. They have really great stuff for, you know, program design and things like that. So, the beginning of the process is the home language survey. So when we have students come in and register, they fill out a home language survey. From there, it gets sent to me. I look at it and we determine if we think that a student should be screened. That's the starting off point. Most times, we automatically screen. It depends on how old they are. For example, if we have a kindergartner whose birth certificate says that they were born here, but it says that they speak Spanish and English, I'm going to wait on screening them. Because the problem with our, the problem with ESL on a whole is that the only way out is by passing the test. So we have some kids that maybe developmentally aren't there yet, but they're not really ESL students, and then they're in. They're in for a long time. And sometimes we find those are students that may be dyslexic and that was the why, but now they're ESL and also needing special services. So it really depends on the kid. We really look at them. We have our ESL teachers go in, have conversations to make sure, and then we screen. The screening process then tells us their level of language. And again, reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And then they begin the ESL program. At that point, that's when we contact the parents, we go over what our results are. A lot of times, we use a company called Album for Translation, but we also, this year, are going to start using those headsets we bought a few years back for these meetings so that the administrator that's in those meetings or the teacher that's in those meetings has their headset on, and then the parent also has their headset so they can communicate back and forth, no problem. That's where it starts. I will say, out of the 70 kids we have, we have 72 total in the program to our parent refusals. So they technically are still by the state labeled as ESL and they still have to test every year, but they do not actually receive the services that we could provide them, which, you know, sometimes those services are stigmatizing to some families and I understand that. I understand that. Yeah. So by law, if we have, let's say we have 20 Spanish speakers in the high school. They're in one building. We would have to provide, now, the high school would be its own thing. Elementary, it depends on the grade level. It's like, we could do, if it was 3, 5, 20 kids in one building, so if there were 20, let's use Long, there were 20 kids at Long 3 through 5, we would have to offer bilingual programming, which would mean instruction that's given in both English and Spanish because that's our highest language. So a math classroom that's both English and Spanish, taught in both. We don't, we're not there. We're not there.
And that's by law?
That's by law. Yeah, every year I have to file a waiver for our district. Because our, while we have 20 Spanish speakers in those 70, they're spread out throughout the district, throughout different buildings and locations, so we can't offer that because it does, it's not feasible for us to have that program yet. I plead the fifth. What do you mean? It's 3, it's K to 2, 3 to 5, 6, 8, 9, 12. Yeah. The first time I've ever in my life gotten questions about Access for Els. This makes me so happy.
Thank you, Mrs. Debonus. Look, first of all, may I point out gold and blue? Blue and gold. Second of all, Mrs. Debonus is not really doing herself justice. When she started, she literally took the results from Access for Els and she copied and pasted into documents, individual documents for every single English language learner and met with the teachers, explained it to them, and does, this is like her baby. So thank you, Mrs. Debonus, for all the work that you're putting with this. Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to introduce Mrs. Jenkins. So again, when I talk about my team of directors, this is two of them. Mrs. Colley is not here, a Director of Special Services, but they are like behind the scenes nonstop. The amount of work ethic that our directors have is really, it's absolutely amazing. So Mrs. Jenkins says, she's our district testing coordinator. She's also been taking the lead in Genesis, which is a whole lot amongst a million other things. So I just want to, while they're here, just say thank you to both of you for all the hard work that you do for our district. I would not be able to do this without you guys. All right, so now, Mrs. Jenkins is going to report on our NJGPA and our graduation performance from last school year.
I'm excited about this first presentation. And I embed it in one flowing document, but they are posted on our district website under our district assessments, under the curriculum and instruction pages. So last year, I added these slides to this presentation and we talked about how the state of New Jersey mandates that our students, their junior year, have to take the NJGPA. And through that, the results of those tests, they have to have passing scores within one of these three ways in order to graduate high school. So for the class of 23, 24, and 25, this has been the mandate since 2023. So to score a 725 or higher on the NJGPA means you graduate by the first pathway. Our goal is that we have as many kids possible passing through our state testing. The second pathway assessments could look like PSAT scores, Accuplacer scores. We try to maximize every opportunity. If the students, like our students right now for the class of 26, if they didn't have a 725 or higher in ELA or math, they get to take it again one more time in October. Some of them, we already know, have that second pathway score. The majority of them already do. But when they are sitting there right at the edge and they look like they only missed it by one or two questions, we really highly, highly suggest that they, and I'm going to show you the data as a result of that and the work that we did with the kids last year. So what we're really going to talk about is the class of 25, where do they land in this spectrum? Okay, I'm a little light, so I'm sorry. I might have to make that bolt a little more bold when it hits the internet. So what you're going to see here, and I broke it out by some of our subgroups, our total amount of kids, our special education students, white students, Hispanic students, and our free and reduced lunch students, economically disadvantaged. So you can see where we were in 2024 in the first pathway. So if you look at the total numbers, 82% of the students in 2024 graduated by first pathway. And then in the class of 25, 91%. You're going to see jumps across the, in all of these charts. Our special education is a huge, students for the class of 25 is a, I'm loving the looks on your faces. I know, I feel like, I almost wanted to put fireworks on this. I didn't, you know, implode, blow it up and celebrate. The special education, huge gains in special education and also for economically disadvantaged kids and our Hispanic kids. And you talk about the long-term programs and what we're doing, you know, what Nicole just presented on, for our multilingual learner students, like you see the results here in the first pathway scores. You also see a jump where the, I know it's light on the screen here, but in the, in the third pathway where the numbers just are dropping. Those are the third pathway, those students who have to submit a portfolio in order to meet graduation requirements. Those numbers drop drastically and they, what they do is they move into, some of them, those numbers will move into second pathway, but you also see movement from second pathway into, into first pathway. So this is the ELA. So this is the ELA, and then you'll see it again. So by every single, in every single subgroup across the board, we have hot, in ELA and math, we had more students from the class of 25, which are, achieve test scores by first pathway as opposed to the class of 24. Big Q gate. We knew this was coming this time last year because we reported out on some big gains. But we also weren't done testing them, right? Some of them were, and we also had some students that were new to the country last year. So still, they still had to take the NJGPA for the first time. And then we also had to give them Accuplacer as backup score. So we were, it was, we were chasing it and really trying to push to get everybody to pass by first pathway. So I thought it would be fun to share some other information about the class of 25. So what was, what's next for them? Where are they right now? So 60% of them are in a four-year college, 25% of them are at two-year colleges. And we know for some of our families, that's an economic decision, right? They're gonna go to Bergen Community for their two years, and then they're gonna transfer to a four-year school. So it's smart choice. You're looking at somebody who made that choice when I was a first-generation college student in my family. 4.8% of them are at technical schools, some of them went to the workforce, and we have a certain percentage, 3.4% went right to the military. And this slide shows you where they went to college. I had a little suspicion that it seemed to me like the class, that the class of 25 had students, more students go farther away to school. Like not just they went out of state, but it seemed like more of them went a greater distance. So I looked at this slide, and I compared it to some of the school counselor reports that we do from like five years ago. What I wanted to see was, you know, was it just because there's some, a couple of them are in Florida? And 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 was I getting that impression? But it's really doubled. And so I looked at it as if you have to take a plane to get there. So that there's, they've doubled the the amount of students who actually have to take a plane to go to college. So I think that speaks to ambition, I think it speaks to confidence, I think it really has to speak to family planning and financial planning, and everybody's investment in their student's success and achievement, and then really pushing them. We know it's hard to let them out of the nest like that. But to see twice as many having to take a plane to get to college is, I thought, pretty impressive. And this really, just really speaks to the members of the class of 25 and all of their honor society accomplishments, but also the quantity of dollars that they received in scholarships for college. And right now I have here is our increased projected graduation rate. So at the end of the summer every year, we report out on our students' graduation and our four-year graduation rate. Now, we're, we're never gonna see 100% here, and we shouldn't. Because some of our students are gonna go on to 18 to 21 services through special education. And the way the state, the state counts them as a non-four-year grad, right? So there's always gonna be, we're a little off of 100%, but you also see that we're up by 3.3. And what we also know is that the majority of the students that we did not, that did not graduate with us, isn't because they dropped out of high school, they moved out of state. So those students aren't in that count at all. So that's really a trem, I think, a tremendous figure. Okay, let's talk about state testing for the class of 26. These are our current seniors. This is the quantity the state requires that we report, the quantity of students that participated. We had 100% participation rate. Like I said, we did have some seniors that were new to the country last year, or new to New Jersey, had to participate in NJGPA, but they did that in the fall. And this data just has you look at it across time. And you'll see that the year before, we didn't have, we didn't have enough seniors to report. We really didn't have any seniors participating in NJGPA for the first time the year before. And this is just a general overview. I recapped some of this already, but just, it's a state requirement for graduation. It determines their graduation readiness. It's the ELA component, math components aligned to 10th grade standards, Algebra I, geometry standards. And I just wanna make a note that this is the last year that NJSLA is gonna look like it looks right now, right? The state is introducing a new NJSLA adaptive, which is going to be student-driven, and it's gonna be paced to the students, it'll progress as the student progresses. So we don't know what the state reporting will look like that, but this is really sort of the end of this benchmark cycle. And I think we're gonna start with a, with a new baseline next year. And this talks a little bit about those pathways that we mentioned already. And here's some intervention strategies. This is a lot of the work that's coming out of Mrs. DeBonis's office. She's been working with our elementary schools and our high schools on school-wide funding for our Title I programs and our basic skill teachers that we put into our students' lives. We've revised master schedules, we analyze those every single year. Tons of curriculum analysis, tons of professional development, a lot of work on the evidence statements and where the students achieve and where we need to help them grow. Lots of lots of department meetings and professional development aligned to help the district achieve its goals and also, obviously, the students. Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, Nicole added this hyperlink.
This is what we put in place this summer. When we have our summer leadership, I'm gonna sound so corny, but there one, it's one or two of my favorite days of the year because our leadership team comes together as a think tank. We get to debrief on the year and see where we need to go. And our biggest takeaway was we have all these incredible assessments. Great. Then we start looking at feedback from staff, because Mrs. Violetti always asks for staff feedback, how can we do better? And over and over and over again, you heard from them, more focused PD, more time. Everybody needs more time, right? So what we came away with was, okay, how do we do this? And we predetermined what the year of PD is going to look like to provide the time. So what teachers were saying to us is, we give these assessments, we have zero time to really sift through the data and make it actionable and use it in the classroom like we want to. You know, we look at the kids that we know are really low, so we know how to help them. But everybody else, it's like really hard to sift through. So now we have these days built into our calendar from, we started already, from September 4th through January, where we have focused activities, where teachers are going to be looking at data and sifting through data. And one of the things we started this year, which we think is so important, is the idea of this interdisciplinary eye looking at the data. The math teachers and the science teachers need to work together. That science assessment they take, it's really an ELA test. But it's really looking at graphing and understanding and analyzing data, that's what it's all about. So math and science need to work together, ELA and social studies need to work together. So we've built in those days and that time for them to do that. And our teachers so far have been very happy with that. They know what's coming, they know what to expect, they know they're gonna have time to look at the link at data. They know they're gonna have time to pull through the evidence statement. And then not only look at the evidence statements, but then figure out ways they're gonna use those in their classroom. So we're very excited to see how this goes this year, and then to see how we can make it even better for the following year.
So here are some of our notable achievements. And a lot of the things that we can talk about here is, I'm gonna be able to talk about things that we did it last year, and we did it again. So the class of 26 cohort outperformed the state average in NJGPA, ELA, and math again. When breaking out our subgroup data, we think it's important to do that because every, in any given year, our numbers may look a little different for our subgroups. And I think the real tough work that we do, you heard Nicole's work on that with our multilingual learners, for example, it's, it's a small population when you take it just for like, like one particular grade level for NJGPA in particular. But we had, even though it was less than 10, we had twice as many ELL students in the class of 26 compared to the, class of 26 compared to the class of 25. And we see a lot of numbers like that increasing within our demographic groups. The class of 20, so regarding that, our general, but really, like, let's, if you look at it from a general education perspective, 97% of our general education students are graduation-ready in ELA, and 82% of them in math. And I think that that 97% in ELA in particular is extremely impressive, it's nearly 100%. And our, our demographic groups are growing. So where in year, when you look further in the slides, when you have more time and and you really look at the charts, you'll see, we, in the past, we've maybe had less than 10 where we can't report out on that for student privacy reasons. You'll see now where we, we have more than 10, so we are reporting out on that. But what is really impressive within that demographic data is that it's the second year in a row where you see us close the achievement gap for some of these subgroups. Where we need to do more work is in our special education population in particular, in in ELA and math. And we also see in the class of 26 that our female students are outperforming their, our male students when you combine across all subject areas. And we, in particular, we saw an increase in math achievement in our classes of 26 for the girls. The smiles, I appreciate the smiles. And then you can click through all of these slides. I mean, they're, they're already up on the district website. You'll see, you know, where we, we've made some achievements, we hold strong in certain areas. We continue to grow, or maybe we're just two or three kids off from the year before. Nothing that's drastically significant. I broke out the state data averages here, so you can really like dig in by subgroup to see how our subgroups compare to the state averages. And it's kind of fine print, it's kind of light on this screen, but all of this data, I mean, there's, there's tons of, tons and tons of charts and data, and you could see where we compare from one year to the next. Some of it's trend, and some of it's just standalone data comparing, you know, males to females by gender and all the way through. That's a wrap.
First off, thank you for bringing us to this again. I remember last year you did either the same or similar presentation showing the data from the year previous. And obviously, it's great improvement year over year, right? So I guess for for us, could you just talk a little bit about why you think the success has happened year over year? And how we can help sort of advocate for the community to kind of bring this data forward, to show the, show the community the great success that we've had?
Right, and I would tell you that in in any, any field or any, or any topic, word-of-mouth marketing is critical, right? So part of it is the work that's being done with Nicole's leadership from the, from the curriculum office and the work that she's doing with the teachers. When you saw that professional development calendar, Nicole is a master at scheduling. Not just a master schedule in a school, but scheduling across the entire year so the teachers know what's gonna happen, where our guest speakers are coming in, and schedule time to do that work. So, and I think that the work that the teachers have been doing in curriculum analysis, in the evidence statements, I think that's where we're making the biggest impact. I think in the years in the past, we just may not have been teaching authentically to the standards. The state standards are rigorous. There's a reason New Jersey is one of the top-performing states in the nation. If you look at the National Assessment of Educational Progress, which we participated in in 2024, New Jersey outshines multiple states across the country that you would think that, you know, we might just run close ties with, but we're, we're doing really well in that. So it's also because our standards are so high. And in Saddle Brook, when you see our, the numbers are showing, that's why I was so excited about the pathways, because more students are graduating by that first pathway. I really felt that if we emphasized the importance of that, you know, retake, that we'd be able to push the kid because they're so close. And I think the greatest thing that we could really do as a community, and we've all heard Mrs. Violetti's importance on school attendance and being present matters, but also being engaged matters. Being authentically concerned for your own achievement matters, right? As much as I'm excited that our girls are out achieving our boys in the class of 2006, well, we really gotta motivate our boys, right? So every single one of us play an important role in that, whether it's our coaches who expect, have high expectations for their, for their athletes' achievement. Every single one of us has, has a role in, in all of that.
Another thing is that since the day we became a director team, we kind of, we all believe in the same thing. Our teachers need voice. And we kept saying to our teachers through meeting after meeting after meeting, like, we see what's going on in your classrooms. It's amazing. But that's not what the public is hearing. Numbers speak volumes, and I think they started to buy in. We pushed, prioritized, and for a while there, not just here, but in a lot of districts, after COVID, the tests were like, mm, right? They weren't prioritizing that. And we kept saying to our teachers through PD and meetings, we are, you are teaching to the test. The test is aligned to the standard. So that old rhetoric of, don't teach to the test, you have to, it's the standards, right? And we started to meet with our teams. There's some teachers here that know, we meet with our teams and we talk about, what are you doing? How can we make it better? What do we need? We brought in new programming. And I feel like when you give teachers voice and you hear what's going on in the classroom, and you give them the tools they need, you're only setting them up for success. And to hear our staff, we've all heard, did we get the results yet? Did we see how we did? They're excited to see, this is a major change in culture. They're excited, they wanna know how their kids did. And, you know, two years ago, it was like, oh, we have to listen to the, we have to talk about the test, like, it's over. Now they wanna know, because it really does, it, it fuels what comes next. And it's, it's awesome, I, it's very exciting.
I would also say that the Board of Education also supported us. When, when you talk about new curriculum materials, you approve that in the budget. When you talk about additional staffing for basic skills teachers, you put those teachers in the kids' lives to help their achievement. So school budgets matter, parents supporting the schools matter, parents supporting their kids matter. But really, it's a, it's a multi, it's like all the ingredients in a great recipe, I think, is what we have going on in Saddle Brook right now. I mean, just the pride is in our schools, you all know that, right? We all stood together when we opened up the football field on the 5th, and we all had tears in our eyes when we were on the field. And that's how we feel about the kids and their athletics. And then we all feel like that also about when we see their achievement. And this is numbers, but when we look at their numbers, like Mrs. DeBonis and Mrs. Violetti, like, we know the names of the kids, right? So if there is a dip by maybe 3 or 4 percentage points, I know exactly who that is. And I, I know exactly what they need. And if they're not coming to school enough, we do whatever we can with the school counselors and our data teams to really look at why and how can we help them more. And that's how invested we are in your kids, because we think that they're our kids. Any other questions?
So I wanted to say thank you very much for the PD, because there is nothing worse than going to a PD or a PLC with data and not knowing what to do with it, and say, okay, now what? So I'm reviewing it. So I'm really happy to see that you are putting all of that data to good use and explaining it and working on that. On that note, how many days of PDs? I noticed seven, was it seven?
So there, we have three full days in the contract, the rest of them are when we have half-days. The afternoon, we have PD with our teachers, that's.
Okay, so that's what I want, so those half-days, the teachers aren't just not doing anything, they're truly working on reviewing this, what has been done, so that, so you're also making that a meaningful afternoon.
Right, and you also, the board also negotiated with the teachers' contract to relieve them of some, for some faculty direct at time on Monday's afternoons. So we're not bringing them to faculty meetings that could be a memo or could be an email. So when they're coming together with us, there's some type of professional development, that's our goal this year. But they also have Mondays that they're here and with, with us in the building. But they might be having a grade-level team meeting or some other type of self-directed work on projects that support our students' achievement.
I think it looks great. Good work.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this time, I'm.
Okay, so at this time, I invite the Board of, Board Trustees to return to their seats. Thank you very much, Mrs. Jenkins, Mrs. DeBonis, great job.
Congratulations.
You want to open the meeting?
No, it's been opened.
Okay, we're going to do the Business Administrator Report, please.
Just quick, I gave a more detailed report about projects on Monday. We had a meeting today with the contract that's working on the front and eventually the back athletic field. And the front will start winding down, but probably like another month, like mid-October, you'll see a lot of that gone, maybe another few weeks to get the, the sign-up for the high school and, and do some other stuff. But it's, it's moving along, and the Monday to twenty-second, they're going to start doing the back athletic, a front entrance. Wash at the windows, like I said, Monday will, should be done by Friday, and everything's progressing well. And I, I gotta make just a statement quick that, you know, thank the public, the board for not only this referendum, the one in 2004. We're doing a lot of stuff here facility-wise, there, there are large sums of money for these upgrades, whether you place a roof, windows, but the 2004 one was a lot of things that the public can't see, like the roofs. They did see some of the bathrooms, the students see them more than the public, but a lot of this stuff that we're doing now is, is a lot of visual that the, that the public is seeing, and I think everybody is liking it. I mean, I'm, I'm really happy that all the stuff that we're doing, we're finally making a huge dent in the buildings. And it's great, and I, and I thank everybody.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Ray.
I said, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public? For agenda items?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anybody want to speak? Okay, can I have a motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move on to Board Ac, Board Action Items, sorry about that. B two-five-two-six-point-one-two to B two-five-two-six-point-one-six. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Thank you.
We don't need a second.
Does anybody have any questions?
I provided information on these on Monday, so I won't, I won't repeat myself, but if you have any questions, please ask.
Okay, roll call, please.
We'll start with Ms. Zainello. Mr. Laurentino.
I vote yes to all, but I'm abstaining on B two-five-two-six-point-one-two, all three of them.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
And Ms. Torbick.
Yes.
Education and curriculum? Ms. Zainello?
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. E two-five-two-six dot one-five through E two-five-two-six dot two-five.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I'll highlight the field trips. I just want to state again that the kindergarten classes is part of their curriculum, they're going on the community tour again, that's where they go and they visit the police station, the fire station, the library. It's part of their curriculum, and it's very well-received, and thank you to the community for accommodating our kindergarten students. I believe each school does it a separate day. You'll see the updated curricula that's listed, and then a delayed opening for middle school, high school only on October twenty-second for PSAT testing.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Zainello.
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino.
Yes.
Ms. Roloff.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli.
Yes.
Mr. Ocello.
Yes.
Ms. Torbick.
Yes.
Budget and finance?
Just before you take an action, I did send an email to the board members, like I was stating Monday, I had to remove the revised June report and then also the July reports, I'll have them for next month. And then I added, we approved the items, I think it was back in June, June and or August, that's the stuff that was in the budget, where we bought a vehicle, some power equipment, the digital signs and scoreboard, maybe some other various computer equipment, the awning that's going to be at Smith School, so this is all under that five-year lease financing. So this is in the budget, and this is an action I need to process that paperwork.
Okay.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. BF two-five-two-six point one-five through BF two-five-two-six point two-two.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Ms. Zainello.
Yes to all, but in BF two-five-two-six dot one-five, I am going to abstain from check numbers forty-eight ninety-three and fifty-zero-one. And then in, hold on, I just lost it. In BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, I am going to abstain from ID number BOEF, I'm sorry, BOE-four, and number twenty-three. Yes to everything else.
So when you're all going through it, if you have your sheet up, there are several of you that are on for the Board of Ed workshop in October, so if you could just flip to that sheet and, like Ms. Zainello did, I'll, I'll try to pull them up.
I got it right here.
I don't know if I put them on.
Who's next, enroll call?
Oh, you got it ready, okay. Okay, Mr. Laurentino?
I, I'm going to say yes to all, but I'm going to abstain in BF two-five-two-six dot one-five, checks number four-six-one-two, four-seven-seven-zero, four-nine-one-seven, and then also abstain BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, number twenty-three, and BOE-five.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain from BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, BOE-six.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes to all, but I will abstain to BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, BOE-number-eight.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes to all, except I'm abstaining on BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, BOE-nine.
Mr. Ocello?
Yes to all, except BF two-five-two-six dot one-six, BOE-three.
And Ms. Torbick?
Yes to all, except BF two-five-two-six point one-six, BOE-seven.
Thank you.
Okay, got it with me?
Got it.
Okay, Facilities and Operations?
Excuse me. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. F two-five-two-six dot two. Any questions?
Second, I need a second. I need somebody to second, second. Thank you.
My heart's a meat.
That's what I heard, too. Does anybody have any questions about that? No?
One day I'll have a question, and I won't be prepared.
Roll call, please.
We got to work on that now.
When, when professional wrestling comes to town, you guys are going to have questions.
Ms. Zainello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocello?
Yes.
Ms. Torbick?
Yes.
Policy.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P L two-five-two-six dot two, they're all on for a second reading from P O one-seven-three to P one-six-four-eight dash one-five.
Second.
Dot, sorry.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'll just share the, for the parents, student use of vehicles on school grounds, that's going to be updated to read students in grades four and up to ride bicycles to school. Currently, it says grade five and up. And then the student sun protection, that was mandated by govern, by the governor's office, and it just states that students will be permitted to bring sunscreen to school. Staff will not be applying the sunscreen, but they are permitted to bring the sunscreen.
Thank you. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Ms. Zainello? Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Ms. Ocello?
Yes.
And Ms. Torbick?
Yes. I guess I'll do this one.
Sure.
Negotiations. At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following, N two-five-two-six-point-one.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
This is a sidebar, there were two club proposals at the middle school, high school, so this is to add a stipend for the two that presented on Monday to the Board of Education to be included in the contract.
Thank you.
Through the chair, do we know what the stipend is?
The eight-sixty-one, which is the minimum within their contract currently. I will also say that there, there were five or six clubs that ran last year, they are not running this year based upon the evaluations that were completed last school year.
Thank you for that information. Roll call, please.
Ms. Zainello?
Yes.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocello?
Yes.
Ms. Torbick?
Yes. Personnel.
At the recommendation of the superintendent, I make a motion to approve the following items. P two-five-two-six dot nine through P two-five-two-six dot one-five.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions?
I will go through, we have a power that resigned and some leaves. The appointments are, number one has reached the ninety days, so per the contract, he's relisted. And OT, who is replacing Kim Ferrando, who recently resigned, a lunch aide, and a substitute custodian. Number four has been working with us the last two summers, and he will, he requested, he showed interest in being a sub-custodian, which would be really helpful for the district. Then we have the stipends, salary revisions, our mentors are being approved for our new staff, and point fifteen is a college student to complete speech-language pathology internship in the spring.
Any questions?
Actually, I do, through the chair. Just out of curiosity, the student, did the student reach out to us, or do we have something, some kind of connection with Ithaca?
The student reached out to us. It's actually the daughter of one of our staff members, so we try to accommodate someone who is part of our, you know, related to our staff and also residents of Saddle Brook. So we have partnership with Ramapo College, and that's where most of our student teachers or our clinical interns are from. But then we also, when there's a Saddle Brook resident that reaches out to us and they want to complete their internship with us, or a family member of a staff, we try to accommodate it if we're able to.
That's good to know for the future.
Thank you. I did my internship here. Okay. Roll call, please.
Ms. Zainello?
Yes to all, but I'm going to abstain in P two-five-two-six dot one-two, item number two. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Laurentino?
Yes.
Ms. Roloff?
Yes.
Ms. Traverso?
Yes.
Ms. Adorelli?
Yes.
Mr. Ocello?
Yes.
Ms. Torbick?
Yes.
Committee reports? No? No committee reports?
No, we haven't had a committee.
Liaison reports? You don't even have them?
For what?
Liaison reports.
I have two of them.
I have one as well, a little bit.
I have PTOs.
Go ahead.
All right, let me start with Franklin. When I get it. An update on Franklin PTO from the meeting Monday night. They had their first PTO meeting on nine-fifteen. In new business, they welcomed their new PTO treasurer, Katie Garrison. The PTO website is constantly being updated and including links for upcoming events, spirit wear, and details on their twenty-twenty-five tricky tray. This year, their tricky tray brunch, their tricky trays brunch in bubbly, it will be held on November fifteenth. Donations are being collected, and ticket sales, tickets are on sale now. Parents received a flyer on September ninth requesting contributions, fifteen dollars for a class party and a twenty-dollar donation towards the tricky tray to make baskets for each class. The flyer also outlines a year-at-a-glance calendar of PTO events. The PTO president, Diana McCarthy, spoke last night at back-to-school night and shared a QR code for PTO signups and gave an overview of events, plans for the year. The Fall Book Fair is October eighth and ninth, Picture Day is October twenty-first. Halloween events are in the works, including the Second Annual Spooktacular on October twenty-eighth. Mr. Robinson reported on summer school updates, including new tiles, benches, a sixth-grade rock garden, and new staff hires. He also announced a reading assembly scheduled for September nineteenth. And finally, they're seeking sixth-grade committee volunteers. Their next PTO meeting will be October seventh.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I have Washington.
I have a high school, too, but you can go.
Oh, please, no.
I'm sorry, I forgot you had two.
I need a breath.
I thought you had two, I forgot you had two.
This year's off to a great start at Washington School. All the preschoolers are settling in well and acclimating to their new routines. Seventh Classroom is up and running, and they welcome Ms. Roselli as, as the new teacher this school year. They're also in the process, as Mr. Caratti said, of replacing all the windows, and they look amazing. Teachers along with the PTO are in the progress of, in the process of planning many fun events, fundraisers for the year, more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody?
All right, high school, middle school.
There we go.
They had their first PTO meeting tonight. It was actually an in-person one, the first one since COVID. They're going to have future virtual, they're going to have future meetings, virtual, two for middle school, two for high school. The fundraisers that are planned are photo night and pocketbook bingo. They provided breakfast for teachers after back-to-school night. They're providing the water for homecoming, which is tomorrow night. They also plan on raising funds to give out scholarships again, and they concluded their night with raffling off some great prizes.
Thank you. Go ahead. Well, school's first PTO meeting will be held on Tuesday, October seventh, at, in the cafeteria. For any additional updated information, at any time, please visit the LMS PTO website, which can be found off of the LMS main homepage. Previous programs, our annual kindergarten playdate was held on Tuesday, September second. The incoming kindergartners were warmly welcomed with popsicles, water, jitter glitter, and jitter glitter and a poem and colorful sidewalk chalk as they met their new classmates and teachers. The LMS faculty and staff started their week, first week of school with a special treat, coffee and pastries to kick off the new year. PTO membership forms will be going home this week. The Fall Book Fair will be held on Wednesday, September 24th through Thursday, oh, and Thursday, sorry, September 25th and Friday, September 26th during school hours. We will also be hosting an evening book fair taking place during our back-to-school night on Wednesday, September 24th. During back-to-school night, we invite the LMS families to stop by the PTO's table to meet members of our executive board and volunteer for our upcoming PTO events. Our annual David's Cookie and Cheesecake fundraiser will be taking place September 19th through October 3rd. October's, orders will be delivered before Thanksgiving. Please consider ordering from an LMS family. The annual trunk-or-treat event for LMS families will take place on Friday, October 17th. Volunteers are needed to decorate trunks. We look forward to a wonderful school year. Thank you. Anybody else? Go ahead.
For the NJ SBA meetings, just wanted to remind everyone that there is a meeting coming up on Monday, September 29th at 6:00 PM at the Holiday Inn in Hasbrook Heights. You could either attend in person or go virtual. And the topic is AI 2.0 in education, navigating the next wave together. So if we decide that we want to go, we can let Mr. Caratti know and he could look that for us. Sign us up, Brett.
Yeah, I'll go. Do you want to know now? Sylvia said yes.
Haley, you joining us?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I am.
For the NJ SBA.
Yeah, for two days anyway.
Yes. No, not the conference.
Oh.
The regular meeting. It's here in Hasbrook Heights.
Yes.
Ms. Traverso.
Yeah, well, email me.
Okay.
Because you have to tell me if you want to go in person or virtual.
Yeah. Person, we're all going to go. Yeah, we like the person one.
Yeah.
Mike, honey, Michelle. Vinnie? It's a Monday. Is that hard? Okay, well, let Ray know.
Yeah, just let me know. In person or virtual?
Okay. Are there any other reports that need to be done? Okay. Okay, correspondence? Nope. Oh, I didn't know either. Old business?
Yeah, some quick old business because the Hall of Fame Committee is old business now. We can do it, Tony, sorry. Next meeting is going to be September 30th here at 7:00 PM. We're going to start now the process of actually inducting members and things like that. So if people want to show up, we will be here.
Great. I have a question on that. How many are, do you plan in inducting?
We have not determined that yet.
Okay. That was old business, right? New business? Okay. I guess I have to do the whole. Can I have a motion to open the meeting to the public?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Does anybody want to speak? Just checking, okay? A motion to close the meeting to the public?
Motion.
I need a second. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're not going into closed script. Okay.
Can I just say one thing?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to give a shout out to the cheer coaches. They're new, Taylor and Angelica. They are amazing. I'm shouting them out because my daughter's on the team. So I know firsthand how well they're doing. We did a halftime, a battle of the halftime in Wallington, which was like really nice to see the girls doing like competing against like a competition. And they're all our regular cheerleaders. They're not competition cheerleaders. So that was really nice to, like, they just felt the vibe of being in a competition setting. So that was awesome.